Noting the hour of 7:05, I call to order the planning board meeting of September 21st, 2021. We're gonna have a lot to cover tonight, and so I want to keep things moving along. The first order of business is going to be approval of the minutes of September 7th. We have a hearing at 7:15, the continuation of a site plan special permit for 21 to 23 South Main Street. We have a request for a, an exception to section 4.2 for 55 Farm Road. And we have a preliminary site plan review for 5 Washington Street and a couple of other little things. So for anyone that is interested in 55 Farm Road, I'm gonna take that closer to, it's not gonna be before 8 o'clock. So if someone wants to go finish their dinner and come back, we will not start that discussion before 8 o'clock. I would really like to do minutes, continue our hearing, and do 5 Washington Street first, because I think, well, 7:15, we have an appointment at that time, and 5 Washington, I think will be quick. So if there are any, any other changes to the agenda, Gino?
No.
Okay. So has all members had a chance to look at the minutes of September 7th?
Yes.
Will?
Yep, me too.
Okay. The only change that I have is under members present, Marion was written there, and as much as we miss her, she should be under other present, not members present. So if we can make that one modification, I move to approve the minutes of September 7th, 2021, as slightly amended. Do I have a second?
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Addie May?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
All right. So next thing I'd like to do is I'd like to elect a vice chair and a clerk. So I would like to move, I move to nominate Addie May Weiss for vice chair of planning board. Do I have a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Will? Rob Wolf?
Aye.
And I think that's good. So I also move to nominate Will Dunham for clerk of the Sherbin Planning Board.
Second that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Will, you can't say anything. You can't say no. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Chris, aye. Addie May?
Addie May, aye.
Rob?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so Frank said he was gonna not come in until 8:15 because he had a mandatory meeting at school, and considering at 7:15, we have the continuation of the hearing, which he can't vote on anyhow, I said, not a problem. So I would like to take things a tiny bit out of order, as I said, I'd like to do after our South Main Street discussion, I'd like to do 5 Washington Street, and I just plan on introducing that real fast, and then hand that over to Addie May. So we have about five minutes to kill.
I have a quick question.
I want to comment on one thing. Under reports of meetings with other boards, Rob Wolf, hopefully Thursday, will be appointed to the MWR TA Advisory Board representing Sherbin. So they have a meeting on October 4th. So Rob, this is for you. At our next meeting, you're gonna have something to report. So so I will be, I'll attend the select board meeting on Thursday in case they have any questions. I can't see how they have any questions at all, because I think Rob will do a wonderful job representing the planning board and Sherbin in that role.
Do you happen to know, Chris, are those virtual meetings at this point?
Those will be virtual meetings. And as I've said before, the first meeting should be great, because Karen Stilka, the Senate President, will be the guest. So it'd be interesting to hear what she has to say, and looking forward to your input, Rob.
Okay.
Just to kill a few minutes, I just want to remind old and new members to read the open meeting law and the conflict of interests law, and there's an online test. I believe it has to be done every two years. If you haven't done it, we don't throw you off the board, but the town clerk likes to know that that's done. Is it every two years, Gino?
Yes.
Okay.
Chris, I have a quick question. Can you briefly explain the role and responsibility of the vice chair and the clerk?
The vice chair is if after this meeting, I leave my house and somebody's not happy with how the meetings run and runs over me with their car, Addie May will then run the next meeting. Basically, it just puts structure, and then if Addie May can't run a meeting, then Will would run it. Now, nobody's saying that Rob Wolf or Frank couldn't run it, but it gives structure to a meeting, and you'll see in about two minutes why I wanted to do that before 5 Washington Street, because after I introduce it, I have to recuse myself. I am not sure if I'm truly considered in a butter, but I'm very, very close, and I don't want there to be a view of any conflict. So that's why I wanted to make sure Addie picked that one up. So I'm a quick talker, and we have four more minutes. Gino, is there anything to report under Town Planner Report?
Well, maybe just to note that it has, I know we had gotten notice earlier in July, but it's now been officially announced that Sherbin, Sherbin has received Green Communities grant in the amount of $71,092.
So what are we gonna do with all that money?
Have a giant green, green party. No. It's mostly for weatherization, insulation in Town Hall and and weatherization in both Town Hall and the DPW garage.
That's wonderful.
Yes.
That's wonderful. Good job, good job. Is there anything else, Gino, to report? You have three minutes.
We've been working with David Williams and Jeanne Guthrie on infrastructure for hybrid meetings at Town Hall. Where we'll be applying for a grant to buy some equipment so that we can have in-person meetings, but people at home would still be able to participate by Zoom. That's, you know, that's the hope. This grant.
Well, a lot of towns are doing that now. Like, I know Needham, all towns, all meetings at Town Hall are open and, and they're live, but they also have the hybrid option for people that wanna either, you know, they're concerned about COVID, or they just want to stay in their pajamas, but want to be more engaged with what's going on in town, which is both very positive.
Right. Makes a lot of sense. Probably this meeting tonight would not have as much participation if everyone had to come down to Town Hall, I would guess.
Yep.
So we wait, the 7:15 is on the agenda for the Dunkin continuation. Are we, were you proposing 5 Washington would be before or after the Dunkin continuation?
I think it definitely, I think that's gonna be 5 Washington's, I'm guessing it's gonna be pretty quick, but not that quick.
Okay, so after the Dunkin reversal?
Yeah. And that's why I look at 55 Farm Road, and I'm guessing we're gonna get to that probably closer to 8:15, but I didn't want to hold up. That's why I said if anyone's just looking for that, they can go home and have finished their dinner, because I will not start that before 8, but it'll probably be closer to 8:15. I'm just, I'm just guessing. I'm just guessing. It is 7:15, so I would like to continue the hearing for the special permit for 21 to 23 South Main Street. This is a very positive project for the downtown, and it has received almost universal support from town boards and residents. The first half of the hearing, basically, I gave some opening remarks. The engineer gave his report. We had some input from residents, and we had input from board members. There were some issues that were not going to be solved at that meeting, and so we decided to continue it and sort of see if we can solve some of these problems. Several problems were when I looked at the layout with DPW Director Sean Colleen, we weren't really sure how the sidewalks would connect going south from the project, and, and he was concerned about a future connecting sidewalk going north, and if there was curbing, then would be, they'd be putting in something that we would then have to remove. We also wanted to reach out to the folks at Pilgrim Church and make sure they really understood what was going on. They had, they were concerns, they had many concerns. Some of them were important to this hearing. Some of them were just things that I think we should be aware of, and I tried to separate that. So I'm gonna be super, super quick here. They were concerned about how the sidewalk would connect, whether it was behind their sign or in front of their sign, and the conversation was getting a little wonky, and so I chose to offer, let's separate that discussion from the special permit, and because they, they, it was gonna take another month or two to figure out how we could make all parties happy, and I didn't want this hearing to go on for another month. So we separated out the, the, the south connecting sidewalk to what's really Sherbin land, but it's directly in front of and used by Pilgrim Church. There were concerns about screening and plantings on the south side of what's gonna be the new Dunkin Donuts. We have addressed that. One, there was one comment regarding when they're at the side of the church, that little speaker when people place orders. My response to that was, well, we can't do much about that, but now the speaker will be faced west, and so they're gonna, they're gonna get less of an impact just by moving the speaker. The other larger issue was use of the Pilgrim Church-owned parking lot across the street. There was some concern about some of the railings occasionally getting knocked down. I said, you know what? That really has nothing to do with this hearing. As a town, maybe that's something we should address. And there was concern about the trash barrels filling up and sometimes overflowing. That's a little bit tied into this, but I think those are problems that we can solve with discussions with the town. Right now, there's one trash can that I believe Alex has put there, and he empties it. I don't really know if it's his responsibility to empty a trash barrel that's A, not on his property, but also it's, a lot of people use it. It's not just people that go to Dunkin. That, that's, that's a drop-off and pickup. It's gonna be a drop-off for the late bus, and so I don't know if Alex Weatherall should be the responsible person for picking up, emptying our trash barrels. So what I asked the folks at Pilgrim Church is, can we make that a discussion for a future meeting when our schedule is a little bit lighter sometime in November, and just have a joint meeting and see if we can solve sort of the usage problem over there? They seemed happy with that. I think they're gonna be happy with separating the discussion. So, you know, we were under the impression at the last meeting that they had full knowledge of how that was going to be connected to the the crosswalk. Obviously, that was not the case, so what we decided to do is hopefully, in, that it was agreed to, and I think it was agreed to, Gino will know better, because we've been making tons of phone calls today, is that they'll set money aside, and the engineer will say, okay, this is how much the sidewalk would have cost. They'll put it into an escrow account, and then later on, when, when the town decides whether we want the sidewalk to go inside or outside, there'll be funds to pay for it. So that's where I am right now. Gino, do you have anything else to add?
No, I don't think so. Maybe we should turn it over to the applicant.
I would like to. I just figured I'd just give everyone a quick background for people that hadn't been following all the back and forths. So who's representing the applicant tonight?
That would, that would be me. For the record, my name's Brandon Barry. I'm with Bowler, the civil engineers for the project. I'm also joined by Alex and Laura Weatherall, who are the applicants and owners of the property that we're here to talk about tonight. If it's all right with the board, I will go ahead and share my screen, just so we can have a plan to kind of all talk about, if that's all right.
That would be great.
So now can everyone see the, the plan on the screen here?
No, that's your email.
Oh, good. How about that?
Oh, there you go.
Okay. So I think that was a great summary of, of kind of what we had talked about at the last meeting and some of the items that have happened since then. What we have here is a, a plan that we had revised coming out of the last meeting based off some of the comments that we had heard. One thing I will, you know, just directly get, point out that the Mr. Cherry did a great job describing this walk. We had, we had done a slight adjustment to it based off commentary about the sign. This was put together before we got, I spoke with Gino this morning about the meeting last night. So obviously, it doesn't reflect the, the wishes to have that come around the street side of the, the sign there, not on the church side of the sign. I think, you know, talking with the applicant, we're, we're in agreement that separating this sidewalk from the rest of the project, it's, it's kind of an incidental thing, and was something that we had been told early on that the town wanted to kind of help with this sidewalk connection that's gonna be brought down South Main Street. I think the idea of, of setting some, some money in escrow to support that would, would be a great one, and I think separating the two so we can focus on really the, the improvements that we're making on our site, and, you know, not, not get this bogged down in a, an extra that we had added in the right of way based off some conversations with the town. So I just want to point that out so nobody sees this walkway and thinks that they weren't heard at the meeting or that we weren't listening to this. I just didn't have time to get it updated after we got the results of that. So as we progress into the site, there's, there's not much change across the sidewalk. In this area, while not requested by the board, it was something we had looked at and thought may be better. This, this area here was previously shown as just pavement to match existing. It wasn't supposed to be a parking space. It was just some excess pavement, so we've actually shown a curb through here, and are gonna turn this into landscaping up to the wall on the church's property, just to add more green space onto the site, and then it also affords us the opportunity to provide this concrete area here where we can put some bike racking. Seemed like something that was important to the board, based off the last meeting was bike racks and patios. It doesn't look like we have a lot of opportunity for patios, just given some of the elevation on site, but providing bike racks, so especially when this connection comes online, bikers have a place to, to stop, put their bikes and, and access our restaurant. So it's one change that we have made relative to continuing the, the town sidewalk connection on South Main Street. Previously, our walk for these parking spaces just terminated at this ramp here and continued to the building. We've actually extended the walk around the corner. We'll come to an area here where we provide a crosswalk across the drive-through lane, and then through this projecting island, we're showing another concrete walk that will then terminate here. Sean, with DPW and I spoke about this after the last hearing, and it seemed like this was in line with his expectations. I have shared the plan with him, but this allows them the opportunity to come in, create a sidewalk across our entrance, and then work, you know, completely in the right of way and not have to come and impact any of our landscaping or other features or the curbing that we just put in. So we'll, we'll work to make this connection here to make it much easier for the town as they progress through. I think those were really the, the gist of the changes that we had heard was, was accounting for that public access and then, you know, kind of activating the frontage of our site a little bit more, be it through, you know, some bike racks or some patio areas, and, and, you know, I think we've, we've taken most of the feedback that we had heard from the board and some of the comments that we got from Town Planner and Town Staff and got them into our plans. You know, I think within our site, we're able to accommodate most of what was requested, and then, you know, obviously with what's going on in the right of way and along the frontage of an adjacent property, there's a few other players involved, so we can't, you know, make definitive answers there, but as was mentioned, the, the applicant is willing to work to, to help the town, to support that connection, to continue to be a, a good neighbor and, and good business to work with. So I think that, that addresses most of the board's comments that they had had, and I can certainly go into, to any other areas that you think I may have left out. There were a few other minor comments from staff relative to some, you know, cleanup or more administrative items getting into our plans, ensuring we had signature blocks for all of you folks to sign the plans once approved, updating our list of waivers on the front of our site, and then providing a, an additional detail or two and, and some notes relative to dust control on our erosion control plan. So all, all pretty minor comments that we have outstanding, and really, the only reason we haven't gotten them into the plan is we didn't want to finalize everything and resubmit till we understood how the sidewalk went. But there, we have no opposition to the rest of the comments, just more of a, a timing issue. So I think all the outstanding comments are, are amenable to us and things that we'd be willing to be put in the plans and, and really won't have any impact on the layout or operation of the site. I think that, that really summarizes the changes that we've made and, and where we believe we're at. Again, Mr. Cherry, I appreciate you giving such a great summary on that. So if there's any other areas that we'd like to dig into or, or questions out there, I'd be certainly more than happy to answer them.
That, that's great. I'm gonna make one other comment, and then I'm gonna ask the board members to comment, and then I'm gonna open it up to the public. Okay? There was always a desire by me and by the board to have maybe a picnic table or outs, or some outdoor seating. That's gonna be really conditional to the Board of Health, because it's, it has to do with number of seats and, and, and the the size of the leach field and, and how they count seats. So we will, we will lobby the Board of Health as much as we can, and, and Alex said if they will allow it, he would put a picnic table there, which I would love to have, and, but that's a discussion that, that we can have later.
Yeah, and I think a, a picnic table up in, you know, up in this area near the bike racks, it may be on a, a, you know, a grass area, and, you know, maybe not on a patio that's a, you know, permanent structure, but I think we have some opportunities, some more temporary outdoor seating. You know, I think just with, with some of the grades around the site, it's, it's tough to do a dedicated, you know, patio area that would be more than just a table with two chairs. But, you know, I think there's an opportunity for maybe a picnic table here, you know, around some of the plantings or near the bike rack, which could be nice for, again, bikers that are using this as a stop as they're traveling through town.
I think a couple logs to sit on in the downtown would be nice. So whatever, whatever we can, whatever we can negotiate, whatever we can get. So Addie May, do you have any comments? Thoughts, concerns, criticisms?
No, this looks good. I mean, we've had multiple hearings. Again, we've been in kind of informal discussions since November, earlier of 2020, so there's been a lot of thought that's been put into getting us to this point, and, you know, a lot of things that are very positive about this. So I think we're in a good place here.
Will?
Yeah, I agree. I think it's really great to see this all come together, and I think it's shaped up really well.
All right. Elizabeth?
No, no more comments. It's good.
Rob Wolf, do you have any comments, thoughts, criticisms?
Just love the idea of some kind of outdoor seating, but do what you can there. Nothing else.
Okay. I was gonna say something, and I forgot what it was. It, it doesn't matter. So any public comments? Gino, whose hand is up?
I don't see any hands up, but I have, I have a couple of questions since you called up.
Well, it's not your turn yet. Okay, Gino, do you have any comments?
Until somebody raises their hand, I guess I'll, I'll take the turn.
Sean's had his hand up, too.
Oh, yeah, I see, I see.
I can't see whose hand's up, so I'm gonna have to rely on Gino. So.
Yeah, Sean has his hand up. But before that, before Sean, just two questions. One, what about deliveries to the site? Is there, you know, are there specified times that deliveries are expected? And related to that in a way is the, the exterior lighting. I know the additional lighting is only bollards in the, across the the drive-through lane and, and on, on the building, but is there a, like a specified time that those, those need to be on, or they, can they be turned off at, say, 10:00 PM or whatever time is appropriate? Those would be, I think, my only questions.
And deliveries, I, I can't speak on the exact delivery hours. I do know from, from my experience with Dunkin', is, is they typically will happen, you know, earlier in the morning, since they're, they're getting stuff in for the day and typically during off-peak hours. So, so, you know, first thing in the morning, even more first thing than, than most of us would expect. You know, when, when the sun is just rising, you know, the, I think the lights could be, we'd be open to restricting lights being turned off, you know, an hour or so after the business closed, and, and, you know, maybe just an hour or so before it opened to allow for that delivery. So I think if, if there is a desire to, to put some sort of restriction on the, the building lightings to, to allow for that, I think that'd be something we, we'd definitely be willing to work with the town on to come up with a, an appropriate schedule there.
Okay. Gino, does anyone have their hand up?
Sean Colleen has his hand up.
Sean, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
First, I wanted to start by saying I love this plan. I, I like what we added for the sidewalk. I think it really does a, a good job of at least keeping us from looking back two years from now and wishing we did something different. I will say that I was nervous about the island or peninsula, as you might say, on the exit, and I, and I've driven in there several times. I've driven over it a couple times and realized that island really should have been there. So for anyone that hasn't driven through the lot, it's painted out. It's pretty clear to see. There's usually one or two cars parked right where that island is anyway. I happened to be there when one of the the Dunkin Donuts tractor trailer showed up to make his delivery, which was always a good sight to see. He's an excellent driver. There was two cars parked in those parking spaces that represent pretty much the island. He didn't have any problem getting around it. So I, I think it's gonna probably increase the safety there. It, it certainly is, because it's the only way to make a safe way in the future to walk from, and you could, you could say if you're at the end of the sidewalk on Farm Road and you end up in that awkward spot where there is nothing, you'll, in the future someday, be able to walk across, get to this site, and not just be hung out in the middle of 60 feet of asphalt. And that's the only way we ever could have done it, because we never could have carried people across what is the apron of that vast expanse that's the entrance to the, the Citgo or the gas station as well as the exit to the church. It, it never, never really worked all that well. It was just cars doing whatever they needed to do. So I, I like it. I think it's gonna increase the safety over there, both for cars and for people.
Appreciate that.
Gino, does anyone else have their hand up?
I do not presently see another hand raised.
Could somebody comment on, well, I know ZBA had three things they were dealing with, two of them, they had no problems with, they got kind of hung up on the sign, and what's the status of that? Does anyone have an answer for that?
We're, um, where we have the sign information out, I think the, the one thing that we had talked about last time that's pretty critical to us is, is Dunkin' is amenable to changing the sign, but they, they typically would like to have something officially from the town saying that change the sign or no sign, and I think we had left off at the last meeting saying that the planning board or, or Gino may try and get us a letter to that effect. We're back in front of the zoning board, I believe, next week to, to close that hearing out. So if we could, if we could get that letter to provide to Dunkin', we'd be able to commit to them to providing the, the sign that they wanted. Absent, you know, a letter to get that and Dunkin' approving that, we would, we would likely forego the sign as, as the building is, is pretty distinct and, and people know the uses there, but as long as we could get a letter, you know, from, from staff saying that this is the criteria to get a sign on the building, we will be able to, to get that as a approval from Dunkin' and then go to the ZBA to review that. And that was, just for some context, that's for a wall signage. One of the wall signs on the building is, is carrying Dunkin' standard pink and orange coloring. The zoning board has requested we do something a little bit more traditional for what you see in town, which is a a black sign with some of the, the gold leaf writing on there. So that's, that's what we're looking to, to work with the ZBA to get. We just need a little bit of support from the town to, to get Dunkin' to allow for us to break their standards.
Could you communicate with Gino either during this meeting, after this meeting, or first thing tomorrow morning, and if, you know, you could get that off? Tomorrow morning, that would be great. I plan on attending the ZBA meeting. If there's any other planning board members that want to attend, please let Gino know so we can post it. Tomorrow morning, that would be great. I plan on attending the Z B A meeting. If there's any other planning board members that want to attend, please let Gino know so we can post it.
Um, I mean, I have, um.
Addie May?
Sorry, I, I guess it was, I was late to getting it out to everybody, but around six o'clock, I sent a letter to planning board members of a first draft of this letter. Asking, um, just to sending it to Z B A supporting the, the same gold leaf on black Duncan. Lettering as used in the Dover site and the Medfield site.
Yep.
So we have, we will have a letter to Z B A.
I'll be perfect.
Also, by the way, the, um, we have a draft decision, uh, that was sent out, uh. Late this afternoon and one of the conditions in that draft decision is that the sign be, uh, black background with gold letters. So that's another avenue that, that we have to support that concept.
I'm not sure what will be expedited faster before the Z B A hearing, either that letter or, or the decision being final. Um, but whatever one we can use to, with, for our purposes with Duncan would be appreciated.
Or both.
Or both.
Gino, does anyone else have their hand up? Does anyone have any?
Yes, uh, Marion Neutra has her hand up.
Mary.
Uh, just, just to clarify, my understanding, uh, was that the letter needed to be addressed to Duncan. From say the planning board or whatever official body decided to take it up. And it's better that that be done before it goes back to zoning board. So is, this is a letter, just so I'm clear. Not just to the zoning board, it's to Dunkin Donuts, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, to Duncan or it, it could likely be directed to, to us or, or Alex as the applicant, uh, and we can pass that along to them. Uh, but as long as we, you know, they see something official from the town and it's not just us asking impolitely for it, uh, they, they should be fine.
Right, I, I, I understand.
I appreciate the clarifying that.
Yep.
You know, can we, um, I mean, I, I guess a letter from. As far as editing and having a letter that gets in the mail. Um, I mean, I basically just took some pretty basic language from what our conversations had been as, as, as. If people have edits, can they edit it and then send it to you, Gino, so that the, and then can we approve or how do we?
I, I think electronic copy would be sufficient for our use as well, just to, to cut out the postal service.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I trust Gino to draft a letter on our behalf and that way we don't waste any time. That way they can have it in their hands by nine o'clock tomorrow morning. Right, Gino?
Yeah, that, that would work. Addie May has actually already drafted it and, and it looks, it looks fine. So I think we're, we're pretty well all set with that.
That's fine. That's perfect then. Are there any other concerns, questions, criticisms? Um, Gino, I would like you also, and I, I know I'm tough, I'm dumping all the stuff on you. I'd like to have you reach out to the folks at Pilgrim Church. And, and set up a meeting and, you know, the first meeting of the month, I want to be live. The second one is going to be virtual. I think this is a great topic. For a virtual meeting sometime in November and ask them to, um, ahead of time, produce a, a list of things that they'd like to discuss. Whether it's usage of their parking lot, trash, um. Or even if they want to start talking about how the, the, the walkway will connect. Um, but, let's get that on our agenda and, um, and let's keep that discussion moving forward before too much time goes. The next two meetings, we're going to be very, very busy and who knows. So I, I'd just like to give them, get them a placeholder and. You know, get them into something in November.
Okay.
So what's the board's pleasure? Does the board feel comfortable? And unfortunately, Rob, you can't vote on this one because. Um, you weren't a board member for the first half, but it, but what's the board's pleasure? Do you, you feel comfortable, um? Voting on the site plan approval for this, for this project?
Yes.
I'm just going to get on the list. Um, Will, do you feel comfortable or are there more questions that you want to discuss?
No, uncomfortable.
Addie May, how do you feel?
Ready to move on.
Okay, um. Elizabeth, you're not going to be voting on this, but I, but your.
Yes, she is.
Oh, she is voting on it? Then I totally take that back. I was going to say your, your input is just as valuable. So Elizabeth, you, are you prepared to, to vote this evening?
I am, yeah.
Okay. Would someone like to produce a motion?
Make a motion to approve the site plan to, to provide site plan approval for the Duncan plan to propose.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Now, Gino, the details, how, I, I think it's very important tonight as part of this, um, hearing that we discuss. The, the pertinent points of the, um, of the motion. Are you in agreement with that?
I am in agreement and I think that, um, the, the formal decision, the formal written decision that you have a draft of. Includes a series of specific findings as well as specific conditions that the applicant must comply with. And I would suggest that we review those findings. The findings are, uh, criteria that are listed in the zoning bylaw. So in, in the draft, it does say that the, the, the board finds that, that, that each criterion is met. Uh, but, um, that's just me drafting. The board needs to actually make those findings. So we should go through that and we should also go through the conditions. Some of the conditions have some question marks, so.
Is this something you can pull up on the screen, Gino?
Yes, it is.
Now, not only putting it up on the screen, should somebody read it out loud? What, what's your preference?
I, I think reading it out loud would be good, but I, let's see. I think I have it on, on my screen here. Yeah, here, here we go. Okay, so it's just some background information. So here are the findings. Can everybody see that? Can anybody see it?
I can see it, yes.
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, so, um, the first one is compliance with parking lot size, frontage, yards and heights, dimensional requirements in, in, uh. In essence, and, uh, the, the response says that the planning board finds that those requirements are met. Subject to the finding by the Board of Appeals, which has already been approved, that, uh, the, the new building is. Even though it doesn't need to setback, it's okay because it's, it's the same as the current building. Um, convenience and safety of vehicular pedestrian movement. I think we've discussed that already quite a bit. So the planning board finds that that one is met. The adequacy and arrangement of parking spaces. Again, um, I, I think there's, nobody has an issue with that. Off-street loading and unloading of vehicles. Um, Sean Colleen had just discussed that and that seemed to be, to work out okay. Uh, arrangement and appearance of proposed building structures, illumination systems, signs, screening and landscaping. Again, it seems like everybody is, is, uh, okay with that. Adequacy of methods for waste disposal, surface and subsurface drainage and lighting. We've discussed, uh, those and, uh, those are okay. Protection of adjoining premises and the general neighborhood from detrimental use of the lot or trap. We discussed adding screening for the pilgrim church. Consideration of the natural characteristics of the site, including geological features, soils, vegetation, slopes, watershed boundaries, scenic areas and views. Essentially, it's an already developed site that's just changing, so it's not really impacting. Natural, uh, or geological, uh, features. Adequacy of municipal facilities relative to fire and police, public works and other municipal services. Uh, description of the methods to be used during construction to control erosion and sedimentation. Protect soil stockpiles and existing trees and ensure the continuation of the unique characteristics of site. The plans do include a, a, uh, soil erosion and sedimentation control plan. And, uh, as was noted by the engineer, they've added a dust control element. Uh, whether the proposed location and exterior appearance of the buildings will promote and preserve harmony and architectural treatment. Um. As noted at the first hearing, uh, several meetings were held with, with both the planning board and the historic district. Commission about, um, the, the appearance of the building and. Uh, resolution was found with the exception of the sign and now, and now it looks like the sign is about to be okay as well. Adequacy of methods to preserve and protect the quality and quantity of groundwater at the site and neighboring locations. Uh, it's not actually, uh, technically part of this plan, but the applicant does plan to. Replace the existing septic system. Other than that is, uh, they, the amount of storm water is being reduced. Because they're reducing impervious surface. So this, this requirement is, is satisfied as well. In, in my opinion. So if the, the board is in agreement with those findings, then, uh, then we could move on to the next thing.
Do you, you want to vote or you just want a consensus vote, Gino?
I think a consensus is fine on this part.
I'm fine with it. Will?
I'm also fine with it.
Addie May?
Same, fine.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
All right, Gino, keep on going.
Okay, so a number of waivers have been requested and this, this does require a vote. Um, so they requested a waiver to show buildings within a hundred feet. They actually did show those buildings, but it's on the cover sheet. It's not in the, the main part of the plan. So, um, as drafted, it shows that they. Um, that that would be granted. Uh, next waiver was for, uh, a photometric plan for their lighting. And again, they're, they're not adding, the parking lot lights are already in, in place. Uh, most of them, they're adding two bollard lights at the crosswalk, uh, right, across the drive-through lane. And building, building lighting. So it, it's really a very minor change in lighting. Um, the existing building also has building lights, so it's really very minor change in lighting. Uh, stormwater management report, um, they requested a waiver from that. And again. They're, they're actually reducing impervious surface. So that's resulting in a reduction in both the peak rate and the volume of stormwater runoff. Uh, traffic study, similarly, uh, the use is already existing on the site. So it's not, uh, not expected to generate a, any significant traffic increase. Um. Identifying the location of wells on adjacent properties. They, they requested a waiver from that. Um, again, they, um, there's, there's not expected to be any impact on existing wells. They're, they're not drilling any new wells. The existing wells will ser, will serve that. Uh, the, the new, the new building as well as the existing. And as I mentioned, uh, there'll be a brand new, uh, septic system. So, um, if anything, the situation should be improved. And finally, they asked for a waiver on indicating the volume of cuts and fills to be on the site. And, uh, it's an already developed site, very little change in topography expected. So it's very minor. Any, any, uh, amount of, of cuts or fills will be, uh, insignificant. So those are the six waivers that, that are requested.
Um, do any board members have any questions regarding any of these waivers? Normally I would take them one at a time, but I'm, Gino's just read them all and I'm, and I'm not planning on reading them all again. So do I have a motion to approve the waivers requested for twenty-one to twenty-three South Main Streets, um, site plan special permit?
Don't move.
Have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Chris, aye. Addie May?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Okay, next, Gino.
Next would be the specific conditions of approval, most of which have been discussed, but, um. Um, again, they need to be just finalized. There's a couple of blanks in here. Um. So one condition is that utility service be underground. And, um, they, they are shown on the plans to be underground. So they, they're already meeting that as long as they. Um, follow the, the, uh, th- this is for new utilities. Um, I see Sean Colleen has his hand raised. He might have a comment about this.
Sure, go ahead, Sean.
I would caution demanding that they be underground. Obviously, the, um. Owner wants them underground, but if, if Eversource comes back and says we cannot do that. The pole's twelve feet from your building. We can't put a transformer down there. We're going to put it aerial. You don't want to come back to a hearing. I just wonder if there's different wording you can use to, to suggest it, push for it. Everyone wants underground, but. The utilities may not be able to do it.
Yeah, the plans show the transformer to be ba- basically at the rear of the building and, and the wires running al- along the side. So I don't know if that, if that was intentional because of a concern with Eversource, may, maybe the in, engineer.
I have no idea, but you, you'd left a pole that was twelve feet in front of the building and you went all the way to the back. Eversource Underground Utilities may not want to go there. Then, y- you don't know. You might be tangling them up in something they can't do.
Uh, um, I'm not sure if I'm still allowed to discuss at this point.
Brandon, I'm trying to hold on you. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, fair enough. The transformer shown is, is an approximate based off where we, we think Eversource would want it to be located. Based off their setback requirements and where the electric room is in the building. Um, I think Sean does have a good point. We haven't vetted that with Eversource. We get suggestions on relocating transformers. I don't think I've ever gotten major pushback on there being underground versus overhead, especially when we're trying to go underground. Um, but it may be nice, you know, to have a, a caveat in there that if, if there's pushback from you, you know, one of the private utilities. That we could coordinate that, you know, with, with the planner or DP, you know, provide a, a note to you, Gino, from Eversource, saying this is why it has to be done. You're just to leave us an out so we don't have to come back and modify the approval.
Yeah, we can modify the language to allow for that.
Okay. So you're going to modify, we're going to modify it tonight if we're going to vote on this, correct?
Yeah. So, so we could say.
Let's do it.
Just add to the end unless, unless private utilities provide documentation that requires overhead utilities or above ground utilities.
Perfect. Thank you, Sean.
Just get that written down. Okay, um, next is basically almost a generic condition. Just that they, they build a project in accordance with the plans. Um, third, that there be no internally lighted or backlit signage on the site and any new exterior lighting on the site. Including signage be downlit with sharp cutoff lenses. And on the signage, I think we, we already discussed that. So I think it'll be in compliance with that. That no salt-based melting agents be used on site. This is a kind of a standard condition that's been on all the site plans. That the planning board has, has approved over the years. Uh, that work within the town right of way in front of the site shall be completed as represented on the plans, including a landscaped island. Maybe I should change that to peninsula at the entrance with a tree and curb cuts for future sidewalk located in accordance with the requirements of the D P W director. The plan shall be revised in conjunction with a landscape architect to include a screening area along the strip between the site and pilgrim church. Something I understood to be in the works already. Um, please correct me if, if I'm wrong on that. That's, that's an understanding I have.
Correct.
Okay, the ne- next, the specific location of the tree proposed to be located in the landscape island shall be determined by the D P W director. To ensure there's no interference with drainage lines and that adequate sight lines are maintained at that egress point. That proposed crosswalk and walkway between the new building and pedestrian activated crosswalk, walking signal in front of pilgrim church. Be deferred pending further discussion about the details of its design and that instead a sum. Left blank be held in escrow to be used at such time that the design is agreed to. Uh, hopefully we can fill that, that in. Next, that any building sign consists of a black background with gold letters and be downlit from above. Ten, uh, that all catch basins on the site, including gas traps be regularly maintained and cleaned at least annually. I, I'm sure that's something that's already being done. Uh, and the next to relate to my earlier questions about deliveries, limited to the hours of blank to blank. And that the exterior lights, other than security lighting, be turned off by I just put ten PM, but whatever, an hour after close of business might be might be better wording.
Ten ten PM is appropriate. Um, and I was just looking and and coordinating on the the hours of delivery. If we'd like to get those in. It looks like the restaurant's currently open six AM to eight PM, uh, Monday through Saturday. So it might be better to have it, yeah, Monday through Friday and then limit the hours on Sunday. Um, maybe if we do four thirty AM to nine thirty PM, it gives them an hour and a half window on either end of opening and closing to get the deliveries in. Um, and then for Sunday, when they're open six to seven, maybe four thirty to eight thirty, if that's amenable to everyone.
No problem with that. Is there anything else, Gino?
Uh, well, then general conditions.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to have a just a a vote on the specific conditions and just sort of that way we can sort of stay more in control of what's going on here. So I moved to approve.
Wait, we have to have a sum in that amount in order to vote on this conditions? We don't have any sum listed.
Well, they're they're gonna work, they're gonna work that out. There's gonna be an understanding and I and I don't think anyone's not gonna honor that. The engineer is gonna work with Alex and and they're just, you know, because depending on how long the sidewalk is gonna be, I mean, what do you think, Gino? I mean, I
Yeah, I I don't know.
The the problem that I have is a lot of this stuff just happened within the last three hours. And so just to throw a number in there.
How about a number to be determined at a future meeting?
Perfect.
For for what it's worth, um, I had taken a look at at what rerouting the sidewalk would be along the frontage of the road um, from where we showed it on the crosswalk along the sign, uh, which is the longer of the two routes between where we previously showed it and where it could be got uh routed through. Comes out to about seven hundred and fifty square feet of total concrete area, uh, which we typically estimated about seven dollars a foot or so, uh, which comes out to about fifty five hundred dollars. I don't know if that quick math is believable enough for the board to think that's a fair number or if we think you know, this is this is a better way to handle it. Um, you know, I don't know. Coming back, I think at a meeting would be would be something we'd be hesitant on just for opening another hearing to talk about it. Uh, if it's something we can work with staff on, I think that that'd give us a little bit more confidence in in the language there.
I would not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
How's that, Gino?
Yeah, that sounds fine.
And we can um, we can work with Gino, we can work with Sean to go over kind of what we're thinking for that layout and and what we think, you know, a a ballpark cost would be to to make sure that we're all in agreement. But I think if we if we cap it at the ten, we can come up with a a number, you know, either either below that or or in the ballpark of what I just talked about. So I think that's that's fair to us.
That's fine. And if and if it's five, perfect. I mean, whatever. How does the board feel about all that? Is everyone okay with it?
Sounds good.
Will?
Yep, sounds good to me.
Elizabeth?
Yes, that seems reasonable.
Okay, so I move to approve the specific conditions on the site plan special permit for twenty one to twenty three South Main Street. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Chris, aye. Addie May, aye.
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 Okay.
And Elizabeth?
Aye.
I said Elizabeth.
Oh, sorry.
Next, Gino.
Okay, the general conditions, which are standard on on all the site plans, that there be an as-built plan uh, to confirm that it's in conformance with the approved site plan within thirty days after completion of the site changes. And um actually, you know what? We should make that thirty days after completion of the occupancy permit. That's a more specific more specific activity could authorize site changes could drag on on for some period of time. Does that sound okay?
Yes.
Fair enough.
And then that the permit expires after two years if it's not exercised.
Fair.
Okay. Um, now, Gino, I'm gonna read that bottom line and basically approve the whole package, correct?
Yes.
Upon a motion made and seconded to approve the application subject to the above conditions. Oh, do I have a motion? To to approve the application subject to the above conditions.
Still moved.
It's been moved. And do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Chris, aye. Will?
Aye.
Addie May?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
All right. First of all, I would like to thank all the folks at the pilgrim church. We the last couple of days has been a little bit fast and furious. Brandon, thank you so much. I know like this afternoon has been crazy trying to get this together and naturally, of course, Gino, Gino's worked his tail off to to get this all put together. Um, I'm looking forward to watching the progress. I'm looking forward to working with the folks at pilgrim church. Please reach out to them in the next day or so, Gino, and get them on a expect particularly Jim Campbell. Um, reach out to him and Peter Lifferton, see if we can get them to come to a a virtual meeting and work up some of those details. And please get that letter to Brandon regarding the sign. Um, and then I'm planning on being at the ZBA meeting. And if any of the other board members want to be there, please let Gino know so he can post it if we're gonna have a call. Anything else, Gino?
Only that Rob Wolf has his hand raised.
Rob, please.
Uh, yeah, just a question. You you had um you have the condition of deliveries based on proposed operating hours and that deliveries would be happening assumed right like within an hour or so before opening and an hour after closing or something like that. But um is there actually a restriction on operating hours or could the um, could they decide a couple of years from now to, well, we want to stay up until midnight instead of nine PM or whatever?
Gino?
They would have to come back to the board. Wouldn't necessarily have to be a a formal amendment, but the board would at that time decide whether that constituted a minor modification or if it were a major modification that would require a a new hearing.
All right, are there any other questions? Brandon, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. It was, uh, like you said, it was a whirlwind couple of days, but we appreciate working with everyone and and, you know, getting us through tonight. Very enjoyable experience with the board here. Thank you all.
All right, all right. Have a nice evening.
Have a good one, everyone.
Yep. Okay. The next order of business is a preliminary site plan review for five Washington Street. So I'm gonna give a little bit of a background. That's to the best of my knowledge, and then I am going to explain why I'm gonna recuse myself. Um, so this was sort of done out of order, and I'm not saying it was an issue. Typically, um, this should have been done prior to applying to ZBA. Um, there was a little bit of a miscommunication, but I didn't see that there was a real issue with doing a little bit out of order, and so we didn't make an issue of it. So the board can do two, can do one of three things. We can approve the plan as submitted. We can approve it with some conditions or we can deny it. Now, obviously, you can always deny things. I'm not recommending that. I'm saying that's what the the board can do with this preliminary site plan review. Um, that when I looked at it, and again, the ZBA went back and forth. And I'm not saying they were wishy-washy, but the site requires eleven parking spaces. They have eleven parking spaces. There was some talk about reconfiguring some of the other parking places. I personally look at it like as long as they have the required spaces and they're painted properly. I don't know if we should make too much of a an issue about, I mean, it's an existing structure. It's an existing business. Um, they're not bringing more cars in. They have the proper amount of parking. But that's for the board to decide. The other discussion that was already at ZBA, but I think that we should at least talk about is the building is not handicap accessible. Because it only has eleven parking places, there's no requirement to have a handicap accessible spot. I personally think it's a good thing because someone doesn't have to be wheelchair bound to utilize the benefit of having it having an open space closer to the door, like my ninety-one-year-old father. But that's a discussion for the board. There's a conditional certificate of compliance with the Board of Health. Um, there were a few conditions that the applicant said at ZBA she was gonna take care of. I don't think it's an issue. They're gonna, they're gonna take care of it. Board of Health is not really concerned. And ZBA has made that a a condition to their approval. So I don't think we have to um be that concerned. I just wanted to sort of give everyone a little bit of a background. And as I said earlier, because I'm gonna butter, I'm not gonna partake in any deliberations or votes. So I'm gonna pass this over to Addie May twice. Addie May?
Hi, everyone. Do we um Gino, do we have anything that we to display or did was Nora prepared to just um, explain this, the site plan that's being proposed or?
Uh, well, well, let's see if she has something. If not, I have a previous version of it that I can display.
I have actually an updated. Thank you every mu- everyone. Um, I have an updated that if Nora and Jim Smith can share as a screen share. Jim, thanks. I kind of was multitasking teaching a class here. So um, it's basically for the required eleven spaces. I met with Gino last Monday. And as you can see, that's the back end of the parking space. It's not as detailed and as the previous uh, discussion, but we have here seven spaces. If you look, that's where the pavement is. Seven spaces and actually that quote-unquote loading zone. Um, I've met with Chris Canny about that and also Gino. That would be, it could be the A space. So as far as I do also um, agree with Chris in terms of handicaps parking. So if space number seven could be a handicap space and then that quote-unquote, it's not technically a loading zone, but that extra space that um, would be what's required for seven and eight. So that would be two parking spaces would be that handicap space for seven because you need you can have that loading zone plus a regular space be considered a handicap space. All right, so that's seven spaces there. And then, Gino, when I met the septic field originally before that septic was put in by the previous owners, there were seventeen spaces. Um, we could definitely get more than the eleven, but um, under you know, looking at this and saying, let's just stick with the eleven spaces. Um, I did that in the Sharpie, so you could see eight, nine, ten, and eleven for the lower parking area. And that is it. Right now, as as far as the septic, what you had mentioned, Chris, um, there was a conditional certificate of compliance. And the only thing left is I am getting, I've replaced the um, that wasn't part of the conditional, but there were railroad ties that were falling apart. So what I did is had granite posts put in. Um, so to make that very nicely done on the sides. And now we do have to apparently finish off um, by right that where Jim is pointing out there, that space we are next week having more granite continuing to um, then kind of block that the pipe for the septic. And we should be all set as far as that with the Board of Health and that I believe Mark um, can sign off as soon as that's done by the end of the week.
Um, just as far as the space, I know this who's had a that building has had a history of um, serving retail for at least since when I moved in two thousand and five. It was a gift shop before or stationary and it's been antique. So it's, and I don't think there's ever been a real issue with the parking. So um I don't, you know, again, that's my two cents on that. It seems like you've satisfied those requirements. Gino, I believe everything else has been satisfied as far as any concerns planning board would be would have jurisdiction over. Is that correct?
Yes, especially because really there's there's been no significant changes to the site or to the uses. So um, it the main thing was to demonstrate that the the parking requirement could still be met and and I I went over there and actually walked the site with Nora and everything looks really good, actually. So yeah, I don't think there's any, there are any outstanding issues.
Okay, then I guess I would make a a motion to approve the um, site plan as proposed.
I'll second that.
And um, if Chris is recusing himself, does that mean Elizabeth has the vote? Do you know, or do we do we have actually, we actually, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting we have more members.
Yes.
So.
Rod, Rod can vote on this one because this is brand new.
Okay, so Rob can vote too.
Quick question. Um, I didn't see that I can see the plan and I saw the plans in email. Was there like a this is, this is just to to do the parking spots? That's it? I didn't see like an application, so I was trying to look to see exactly what the description was. I just want to be clear on what the vote is.
Yeah, there's, there's not an application for preliminary plan, preliminary site plan.
Okay, that was my only question. Thanks.
Darrell, you have a question? Darrell, you have your hand raised time?
Yes, uh, so sorry.
Darrell, are you trying to say something?
She's not muted. It looks like she might have a audio problem. But what while while she's trying to come back, Nora touched on it a a bit, but there's a vent, a septic system vent right about, well, you can't see my my cursor. Um, oh, there we go, right there. And that's where there's one more piece of granite needs to go there. So uh, I mean, that's a requirement of the Board of Health already, but we could also make it a requirement of the site plan. So that might have been what Darrell was gonna say, but she says she's gonna re-log in. So we'll see what she she has to say when she comes back.
I mean, I'm I'm comfortable if there's, I mean, it's already being, it looks like it's already been noted that the granite and the I don't know that we need to make it a condition except for that. Maybe it it, Gino, what would you suggest? Is it better to make a condition that the septic field be protected from someone inadvertently parking on it and assuming that's what the granite does?
Well, uh, I think the existing granite that's already there would prevent people from parking on it, but there's there's just a space at the end and there's a a vent pipe uh, that needs protection. Someone could drive into that. They wouldn't be able to park on the field, but they could inadvertently hit that pipe. Darrell should be back back in. Darrell? Still can't hear her, I guess.
Can she, Darrell, can you? Are you, I'm just looking at the chat. Is there, oh, she's relogging. Okay. There, I wouldn't. Let's see. Marian, do you have a hand raised here? I'm sorry, I missed. I guess with the screen share, we lose visibility of everyone. Is there anyone else that has a comment on this?
Oh, there's a phone, phone just entered. That might be Darrell.
Darrell, have you entered?
Can I ask what the business is, Nora?
Yes, actually, where the French doors are, that will be called Sherborne Gallery and Gifts. And I'm really excited about it. And we're looking to really feature local artists and. Nice high-end gift stores, stationary even too. So we're looking forward for that. And then the main part of the building will be Landmark Residential Real Estate Firm. And, uh. There we go. So that's it.
Thanks, Elizabeth. I'm glad you brought that up. Yeah, no, I think it's a good improvement. Um, this, this. It's a nice, sweet building in our town center. Like I said, it's been. A number of years ago, it was kind of a fun place to pop in. Um, so it's nice to see that coming back. Um, Gino, do we have Darrell? Otherwise?
I.
Okay, she's using chat. She wants to ask whether the parking space are shown, they can be. So that they can be implemented only if needed. The reason is the less impervious surface, the better for groundwater quantity, quality and stormwater management. Are we, we're not adding any more pavement, are we?
No, no, the spa- the four spaces that are on the, on the side will remain as. Um, impervia- I mean pervious surface.
Correct. When we improve that, it would be with P stone that was there before and it will look nice and, and be. Not be pavement there.
So I believe that answers Darrell's question. Does anyone else have any questions? Not, can we have a motion to, I guess we've had a motion and we've seconded the motion and now we, are we, is everyone comfortable with voting? Hearing no, nothing, I'm going to go ahead. Addie May Weiss, I vote aye. Will Dunham?
Aye.
And, um, Rob Wolf?
Aye.
And, uh, Gino, so Chris Owen is, Chris Owen, are you voting or are you abstaining completely, right?
I'm recusing myself, so I'm, I'm having nothing to do with the vote.
Okay, and then, so given our numbers, Gino, where does, does Elizabeth vote in this situation or no?
No, because it's not a special permit.
Not a special permit, okay. Alright, alright, so, um, it passes and. Look forward to seeing more in town.
Thank you very much. We're looking forward to it all, so thank you.
Okay. And so I'm gonna hand it back over to Chris.
Alright. Well, glad to be back.
Well done, Addie May.
Fifty-five Farm Road. Uh, the applicants here for fifty-five Farm Road, you know? Yes, they are. Okay, um, so we've been asked to consider an exception to zoning by law four point two to minimum lot width. In, in a residence, a district, minimum lot width. Is a hundred and fifty feet at the front setback line and at the building line. At no point shall, shall lot width. Be reduced to less than fifty feet. I take bylaws very seriously. Um, rules and regulations, we can make exceptions. We can also make an exception to this. I think we have to be very, very careful as a board when we make exceptions to zoning bylaws. I think the applicant has to show us that it would be unjust to deny it. I would also like to see that there's been a major attempt at citing their well in any other location. And, and I would also like impact, input from the Board of Health. Because basically what it looks like, and I, and I don't know, I, I'm, I can't judge intent. But when I look at the plan, it looks like they're asking to move the well basically twelve feet. Closer to in a butter's lot line. So. It might be fine, but it definitely impacts a butter's use of their property. And, and this is for a, a lot that there's no house on. I mean, we, at Board of Health, we grant variances all the time. To people's wells, to, um, leaching fields, to everything. If there's an existing house, then it's really unjust to deny. At, but they still have to show that they've exhausted all other, um, alternatives. So I'm gonna set a pretty high bar for this. And with that, I'm gonna ask. The applicant to present their pitch. Go ahead.
Hello, this is Jim Murphy. I represent the applicant. Um, and I will try to see if I can correctly share my screen to show a couple of things and walk you through some of this. So. Hopefully. Hopefully that's working. Here, okay. So first, I just, Chris did, uh, mention where this comes from, where the request comes from. And I just wanna have everybody focus on where we are and what our requirements are. So this, uh, this lot is in a residence A. It has a minimum lot size and acres of one acre. Um, however, the two lots that are proposed, unshown on the A and R plan. Uh, the lot which has the existing house on it would have fifty-one thousand eighty-eight. And the, uh, lot two, which is currently vacant, would have fifty thousand one seventy-two. So they both exceed the minimum lot size. Minimum continuous frontage, uh, in feet, uh, the existing, uh, the existing. Uh, as shown on the A and R plan, it's required to have a hundred and fifty. It has a hundred and fifty point two. Uh, but the, the, the proposed, uh, now empty lot, uh, would have two hundred and twenty-one point nine one. Frontage as shown on the A and R plan, so it exceeds it. The, there's a requirement for lot width at the building line. Uh, excuse me, at the front setback line, at the front setback line. It's, uh, for the existing lot, it's a hundred and fifty point two. It's a required to be one fifty and it's a hundred and fifty point two. At the front setback line for the vacant spot, it's two hundred and five point four. And the, uh, building line distance, although it's supposed to be a hundred and fifty feet. For the existing, it's four hundred and eighty-nine point six feet. And for the vacant lot, it's a three hundred and one point eight. So the only thing that is being sought to. Uh, the exception is sought, is, uh, that there is a requirement that says right here. At no point between the required frontage and the building line shall lot width. Be reduced to less than fifty feet without an exception from the planning board. So that's the exception that's being, being sought here. And the context of the request, uh, I'm gonna see whether or not this works with my screen. I think it does. Okay, so I have two plans that were already sent around to. Uh, the planning board also sent to the, uh, list of the butters. Are the plans being shown?
No.
Oh, it shows it on mine, so you're still seeing which thing?
We are still seeing the zoning bylaws.
Alright, let's see how I do this. So. If I stop share on this one and start share on this one. Let's try share screen again. And that's this one. Has that one worked?
This one's working.
It is?
It is. It's a little small. I don't know if there's a way to, at least. Maybe just my end. And is it small for everybody else, or?
Well, I can, I can, um. Make the part of it bigger. Is that better? Did it show bigger there? Okay. So, um, there's just a, a couple of things that, uh, went into what happened in this, in this plan. Uh, so the context of the, this property is that it has already gone through a CONCOM. Um, review, they, that we submitted to CONCOM. It was submitted to CONCOM a notice of intent. The wetlands, which are shown in this wetland line, were, um. Uh, confirmed by the, uh, Conservation Commission. And they influence some of the setbacks that are then applicable to the lot. Um, in addition, the Board of Health. Um, a, a well permit was submitted and, and, uh, allowed. The well permit comply with all of the requirements of the Board of Health. And they did grant the well permit in this location that's shown on the others, other, other one, the other plan below. Um, there, there has been or soon will be a, uh, septic plan that's going to be submitted to. The, uh, to the, uh, Board of Health. And the septic design is anticipated to be in this area of, uh, of the lot. The building envelope is, is essentially here. Um, some of those distances that I gave you are, are shown on this plan. If I need to, I can go over some of those distances. Now, the, the, the thing that happens, as many of you know who live in Sherburne. Is that they have requirements at the Conservation Commission and at the Board of Health that are, are stricter than what's required, uh, by the state. And some of those, um, setbacks I can describe to you. So for example, a well. A well has to be set back twenty-five feet from a property line, which this clearly is. And it has to be set back twenty feet from a driveway. So the driveway is here and that's why this circle is here to show that setback line. Though, a, a well has to be set back one hundred and twenty-five feet from a, from a leaching area. Uh, located downhill from the well and one hundred and fifty feet from a leaching area located uphill from, from, from a, uh. From, from a well. Uh, the wells have to be set back at least seventy-five feet from any adjacent well. And they have to be a setback fifty feet from the right away. Or fifty-five feet from the road, whichever is greater. And so. Uh, some of these intersecting lines show some of those issues. So the, this, this one is showing that there's a well offset that would take care of all this area in here. If we, if we weren't compliant with it, where the well is gonna be. Same thing with setbacks from, from the driveway. Uh, we do comply with the setback from the right away. Um, and these other circles that are shown on this, all these circles are to make sure that they comply with all the other wetland buffers. Um, there's the wetland buffers, as some of you probably know. There's a fifty-foot no autorization zone and then from fifty feet out to a hundred is a buffer zone. So we cannot, uh, we have to be away from all of those offsets as well. Um, so there are, as I said, there are quite a few different, uh, different. Uh, requirements that we have to meet. Um, I heard, uh, Chairperson Owen. Uh, give his view on what function the, uh. The planning board has, I would point out that there are typically different types of things that are asked for in the. In the, in the, in permitting. The most strict of all those things is a variance, and this is not a variance. Uh, it is a variance that requires that you show something that's unique. Uh, and that, that there's substantial hardship if you don't get the variance. The planning board and the zoning board did not choose the word variance. They chose the word exception. When they talked about what it is that we're seeking here. So the variance standard is, no offense. Not the appropriate standard to use when evaluating the request that's been made here.
Well, I'm aware, I'm aware of that, Jim. I was just using that as an example that we do grant variance. I was referring to my time on the Board of Health when I said that. I was not referring to.
I would point out that there's a, there are two different standards on variances. So there's a variance from the zoning board standard, in which that is a very high standard. That requires a substance, showing a substantial hardship and uniqueness of the lot that is not applicable here. I would also point out that in Sherburne, it is true that you can, if you're on the Board of Health, that there are variance requests that are made. Those variance requests are two different types. The variance request in the Board of Health, if you have an existing house. Then the board is quite generous with the granting of those variances. But the Board of Health has stated repeatedly that for new construction, they will not grant any variances. So this, this well on this site with where would, there would be new construction. Will not be able to get any Board of Health variances. The other standards that typically applied when you're evaluating somebody's request is a special permit. Special permit usually, again, has very great standards, as you just did in your Dunkin' Donuts review. There's a whole series of things that the, that has already been established. By the planning board as the things that the criteria that must be met for a special permit. Again, there was no requirement in the zoning by, by law that we obtain a special permit from the planning board. We, we are only required to, uh, obtain an exception, which is of less intensity. Than a variance or less intensity than a analysis under the special permit. Now let me just go into what it is that's being asked for. The amount of area that we're, that is in play, if any, is approximately. Three hundred and six, eighty-six square feet. It's this area, essentially this square, excuse me, this rectangle. The rectangle's made up of twelve feet by thirty-two point one nine feet, which equals the three hundred and eighty-six point two eight feet. That I talked about. And that only exists if, in fact, in evaluating length of the line, the lot width line. If you use a parallel measurement of fifty feet, and this one in this place is only thirty-eight feet. So only if these extra twelve feet by thirty-two feet at three hundred and eighty-six feet. That's the only area that for, that the exception is being requested. Now, we did do some due diligence and there was some comment and que- questions that we had with the building. Inspector and the building inspector, uh, did, uh, at least. Reported to me indicated that this was the type of exception that seemed, uh, uh, to be deserving. Because it is such a small area, there is no building that's gonna go in that area. There is no use that's going to change in that area. It's not gonna have any site change. And typically, the cases all talk about what it is that the planning board's function is. When they're evaluating the things that come before them. And there are three things that the planning board typically concentrates on. One is access. The second is you, is availability of utilities and the third is sanitation. And this area, this three hundred and eighty-six square feet area is not going to affect in any way access to either one of lot one or lot two. Both of them are gonna be accessed by an existing driveway. This is up to the existing house and this will be the way in which you get into the to-be-constructed house. Utilities, there will be no effect on delivery of utilities in this three hundred and eighty-six square foot area. There's already utilities to the existing house and there will be utilities cited that will not affect those three hundred and eighty-six square feet. And sanitation. And again, the sanitation is gonna be on the opposite side of the property where the building site is. And is not gonna have any effect whatsoever on this three hundred and eighty-six feet. Now you'd say, well, what is the total area that was, would be covered by this fifty-foot area if in fact it, it applied? And the total area is five thousand three hundred and thirty-eight, uh, square feet. And we're only seeking to get three hundred and eighty-six less than what would otherwise be that five thousand three eighty-eight. Now, one of the other things, and we have come before the planning board asking for this exception. Even though the zoning board, when they have interpreted the definition of lot width. Have talked about lot width of not necessarily being a parallel line or the shortest line. But being any line from one side of the lot to the other side of the lot. And when that's the case. There is, this is already fifty.
Jim, I'm gonna interrupt you. I think this is really two separate discussions. Um, we're not talking about hypotenuse lot widths.
We're talking. I, I, I appreciate very much that you have, you wish me not to go over that particular point, so I'll.
I don't think that has anything, I don't think that has anything to do with this conversation. Because you're saying, well, if we drew the angle this way, then we don't even need. This. So, please, please, that's a separate discussion. And I think we should just stick with what you're asking for.
Okay, well, I, I appreciate you, uh, asking me to redirect the focus of my comments and I will do that. I just did wanna say that we, we still are reserving the right to make that argument, even if you don't wanna hear it now. I, I appreciate.
In the future, that, that's a separate discussion, please.
Okay, so, so the, the, the additional things that I would say is that there really is. Okay, so, so the, the, the additional things that I would say is that there really is no, oh, as I said, we, we went to ConCon, we went to the Board of Health. We came to the planning board to do the A and R. We've had, had these discussions with the building inspector. This is only three hundred and eighty-six square feet that we're asking for the exception. The effect of the request is that there's no adverse impact at all to anyone. There's no change to the intended use of this area, no, no change to the intended access. No change to the intended sighting of the septic system, no change to the utilities that would service it. And, and frankly, to my mind, although you came on quite candidly about your view on the standard to evaluate an exception, I think the standard is much lower than that. And I think it isn't our, it is incumbent upon us to show that we've exhausted all alternatives, although we, we have done this to show this is the only location, this location, as we explained to the Board of Health, there was only.
Design your project.
The three-foot area that we could cite this well in this lot. And this is the location where we could cite. And once we cited it there and we had to meet the twenty-five-foot setback from the lot line and the twenty-foot setback from the driveway, that is the only place that we could put the well. And I, I, I don't think the standard is whether or not it be unjust to deny it. I frankly think that this, the standard is much more limited to that. And as I said, there is not any change that's being made to this area whatsoever. And I think, you know, there, if in fact the planning board feels that there is some grievous harm that's being done by not including this three hundred and eighty-six square foot area, then that, 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 that should be apparent to us. There should be some reason why someone would tell us that three hundred and eighty-six feet. There is something in it that's so unique that's gonna change the whole view of this property and the whole use of this property that warrants a denial of that exception. And I, and I think that the, you know, I, 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 I would urge you to grant the exception. As I said, it's for extremely limited purpose. Is extremely small area. And it has no effect on the, on the planning board things that they're responsible for, access, utilities, sanitation. And I think to do otherwise would frankly not be fair, not be just and not be consistent with the treatment that the zoning code, excuse me, the zoning bylaw gives by saying an exception. The exception is even lower than a waiver. The highest is a variance, the second is a special permit, the third is a waiver and the fourth is an exception. And this is the property that, that is, is justified to get an exception. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much, Jim. I'm gonna start, I'm gonna make a few comments and then I want the board to comment and then we're gonna open it up to anyone in the public. I'm still not convinced, this is a large parcel. I'm still not convinced that all other options haven't been exhausted. Number one. Number two, as I said before, by pushing the well that much closer, twelve feet closer to the lot line, it encroaches on, sometimes, not always, but sometimes it can encroach on a butter's use of their own properties if they had to re-site a septic system or a well. And so you have existing residents, you have existing properties and this is putting pressure on their use of their property, potentially in the future. Again, if you go.
As I would just point out, it's an interior line. The exterior, the exterior part of the lot does not change. There would still be the same issue for any of the butter's. They would be measuring against this line. They would not be measuring against this line. They measure against this line.
Let me finish. East of this property, there's a lot more land. And, and I'm not convinced that enough effort has been put into it. I'd like to see other plans. And, and again, as I said, I'd like to see a report from the Board of Health that where they say this is not gonna impact any of butter's. I don't think this exception has been ever granted in Sherburne. And I think for this particular case, I don't think it's been given enough, I don't think it's been vetted enough. So I'm gonna start with Addie May. Addie May, please. Do you have any thoughts, comments?
I do. I mean, I'm not a hundred percent sure if I'm. Even in an area where we have no jurisdiction or not, however, just, I mean, I, I know we certainly, we approved the A and R because it met all the wording, it met the.
This is a separate discussion.
Okay, so this is a separate discussion and the concern is, is that this type of exception has not been granted.
Well, that's not, that's not one concern, that's not. That, that's one of many.
And I guess the question is, we, we, well, the concern is, is just as Mr. Murphy's pointed out is every one of the, every well and every septic creates zones of influence which affect everyone else around them. And I'm looking at, you know, so there has to be twenty feet off the driveway, but the driveway here is, who's to say a driveway can't be adjusted? You've got now a new lot created. The existing house, I'm assuming will need an easement to cross the new lot in order to be a shared driveway. I, I just, I'm not sure, you know, like, has every situation been this truly for a new construction, the only place that this well can go, just because it will impact the butter's to the west, potentially.
Okay, so one of, there's just a few things.
I'm actually, I'm actually get, Jim, I'm sorry. I'm gonna let, I'm gonna go through the board members and then you'll, you'll have, if you take a few notes, you'll have a, an opportunity to comment. Will, what are your thoughts?
I guess my, my main thought is that if, if this is a exception that has not been granted and/or is rarely granted, we may need some advice on the planning board side as to what the appropriate standard of review is. You know, we appreciate Mr. Murphy's thoughts on the matter, but we may need our, our own counsel on that.
Thank you. Rob Wolf, please.
Yeah, I guess I just, I, I sort of was thinking in, in advance about both Addie May's point and Will's point. First off, if it impinges on the driveway, could the driveway move over ten feet? And, or is there, is the well at the limit where it starts to a pinch on the septic? It doesn't look like it is, but maybe it does. And secondly, I, I don't really know what the appropriate standard is. I mean, I know that boards will work, work hard to make some kind of allowance with our variance or an exception or whatever for an existing house when it has, you know, a failed septic or something. But I'm not, I don't really have a good feel as to what the standard of review should be for allowing a lot which is currently unbuilt to be built upon.
Well, well, when, when you talk about setback to the, to the septic system on the proposed house, what I'm saying is to, to the side of it, if, if that's an issue, move that over. I mean, there's, there's nothing on that side of it. I know there isn't, but we can't see it on this plan. So anyhow, Gino, does anyone have their hands raised?
Yes, Darrell Beersley and Marion Neutra both have hands raised.
Okay, I can't see who has their hand raised, Gino, so I will let you pick on them as, as you see fit, okay?
Darrell's hand was up first. We have a third person now too.
I'm really hoping that this is working now.
It is.
Yay, okay. I just wanted to be clear on how the Board of Health reviewed this. So this was an application made and reviewed under the assumption that it would get the A and R approval. And so we were merely looking at, is this a valid lot? And do the plans as submitted meet our requirements? Now, mind you, it's only specifically for a well at the moment because the testing, I don't know if it's been done specifically for where the house will go in terms of depth to groundwater from the basement. And some work has been done on septic, but that design I don't think is finalized. So there, there was nothing in the Board of Health's decision that said this is the only place that the well could go, for some of the reasons that you mentioned, but that's not how we review plans. We don't, we make sure it meets our requirements. I just wanna let you know, it's not any determination that this is the only option. It's, it was acceptable as presented, assuming that this property met all other requirements in town and was a valid property parcel.
Okay, thank you. Does Marion have her hand up?
Yes. Ah, yes, I do. And yes, I'm unmuted. Yeah, I just want to step back from the details that we're discussing here, the location of the well and all that. Back to the intent of our bylaws. And now, now Jim and Bob, both of you have actually given me good advice in the past, when I was struggling with getting the right wording in, in the open space subdivision bylaw of how to vet the wording such that kind of silly manipulations of the law wouldn't happen. That is, you helped me design the bylaw language such that it was written so that the intent was clear. And even after that, we found little things that maybe someone could have done with the wording, but the intent was clear. And I think the intent of our lot width bylaws, the frontage, the setback measurements are also quite clear. The intent is that the lot should have a width that's required by our zoning bylaws, both at the, at the right of way line and at the setback line. And you've done that, but you know, that, what you've done is not the intent of the bylaw, and I think you know that. And so when I actually got a close-up view of this plan, which I only got after the last meeting, I just had to cluck, to chuckle. It was like a lesson in how to get around a bylaw. And so I'm not on the planning board anymore, but I have to say, I think this is a, this is a kind of a very clever, I've gotta hand it to you guys. It's a clever manipulation of the lot width language. Similarly, the lot width behind the setback line, between the setback and the house is required to be fifty feet. And I think the intent of that bylaw is also quite clear. That is, the intent was to keep the lot width at, at a width that's appropriate for Sherburne, for our large, large lots and our, our, our roomy, our roomy properties. That was the intent. And to avoid, you know, strange kind of flagship or flagpole lots, I should say. And that was the intent there. And I think you know that. So no matter what is done in that three hundred some square feet, I think that's irrelevant to this. And the well could be placed somewhere else. That's, I think, will become irrelevant too. But I just would urge you and the board to focus on the intent of these bylaws, including the A and R law, and try to stick with the spirit of law.
Thank you, Marion. Gino, does anyone else have their hand up?
Yes, Robert Byrne has his hand up. Please, Robert.
Hi, thank you, Robert Byrne. I live at Sixty Farm Road across the street. I think Mary Ann said it quite well, but it, it really looks to me like we're trying to cram too much stuff in a lot that's too small. And, you know, Mary Ann talked about, you know, they've done some trickery to get around and make this tiny little sliver to have a hundred and fifty feet of frontage. And so they are going right down to the letter of the law. And so I think, I, I think the point of, of this meeting today is to say, all right, well, we're gonna have to go to the letter of the law too and we have to deny this, because it's making these absurd ribbon-shaped horseshoe lots here. And I've seen another document where they have the broader plan for fifty-five plus sixty-five and all the lots look absurd. They look like little rainbows and race tracks everywhere. And you have a bunch of houses that are crammed way, way too close together. And it's really, I think, not the intent of, 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 of the plans and the bylaws of the town. So that's my biggest concern. My other one is just there are a bunch of old rock walls sitting right where they're showing this house in the septic. And I'm concerned that these scenic old rock walls are gonna get destroyed by cramming the house in here. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Robert. Gino, does anyone else have their hand up?
Chris Canny was next.
Chris, please.
Hello, everybody. I'm the building inspector and zoning enforcement. So we, we've had a lot of conversations about this property in the last few weeks between Mr. Murchison and, and myself and Gino. And, you know, I'm, I'm of a few different minds about this, you know, not, not to go too off track about just talking about this exception, but you know, Mary Ann is correct. There's, there's been some, some fancy layout here to make this work, to meet the, the bylaw. And, and it, it's my interpretation that, that the lot width at the, at the street and at the setback line meets the definitions given in the bylaw as much as it may not meet the intent of the bylaw. But it seems to at least satisfy the conditions that the bylaw gives us. Now, the, the, the big condition that the bylaw gives us, in addition to those hundred fifty-foot widths, is the fifty-foot width between the street and the building line. And it's my interpretation that the bylaw is, is trying to be as as clear as possible to say that we need fifty feet of width minimum, not measured at a funny angle. I know that Jim was trying to go down that road, but it's my.
Yeah, thank you. That, that, again, I wanna keep that as a separate discussion.
Yeah, so I, I don't wanna go down that road, but again, we've talked about it, let's just say. So anyway. But at the same time, the fact that the bylaw gives us this exception is, well, it's kind of unprecedented. We don't really have anything else in the bylaw that speaks to an exception. I think this is the one place where the bylaw gives the board the authority to do something like this. So it's a tool that you have. And it's just a question of whether you wanna use it. And I guess my opinion about it is, when is the appropriate time to use this tool, right? What, what, what would the bylaw be intending for the planning board to use as a reason to do this? Cause obviously they intended that at some point, somebody was going to need to narrow a width, a lot width to be less than fifty feet. Otherwise, they wouldn't have put the language in there. It would have been a variance. It would have been very hard to do. It probably never would have happened, but instead we have this language about the exception. So clearly, they intended for it to happen under certain circumstances. We don't know what those circumstances are because it's never happened before. But my feeling is that, you know, a, a, a insurmountable setback issue is a relatively valid reason to ask for this. So the question is, is this an insurmountable setback issue, right? We have all these other regulations in town that dictate where we can, can't put things and how far they can be from lot lines. So obviously, the well location is, it was picked because it fits everything else on the lot as far as the setbacks from all the other adjacent properties, septic systems, wells, lot lines and, and whatever. But really, the driving factor of where the well is isn't the neighboring wells or septic systems or other things. It's the driveway. The driveway is pushing that well into the fifty-foot strip. And so I guess the question that, that I have, and I ask this of the, of the owner of the property, is can we move the driveway over? Because that would be a simple solution to be in compliance. Obviously, this, you're in a conservation jurisdictional area. Grading is an issue on this property where, you know, there's significant elevation changes between the, the front and the back of the property. But, you know, it's twelve feet. Can we move a driveway twelve feet and relocate the well? Because if you can move the driveway twelve feet, the well can land in a place where you do maintain fifty feet of width. I don't know, you know, or is this something that the board can just grant, because they have the tool in hand to do it? You know, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, you're holding a hammer and there's a nail. Do you wanna hit the, the nail or do you wanna pull it out? I don't know. But, but, um, the, the, the bylaw has, has given you this, this authority to do this and it hasn't really given you any particular reason to say yes or no. So, you know, I'm, I'm very curious to see which way you all go on this. Because Gino and I have been puzzling about it for, for quite a while and it's, anyway, well, well, maybe we'll set a precedent tonight and that'll be, that'll be something, right? All right, anyway, that's, that's my thoughts.
Thank you very much, Chris. Gino, does anyone else have their hand up?
Brian Moore is next.
Brian, please.
Thank you. Um, my name is Brian Moore. I live at forty-nine Farm Road. Uh, I'm a butter to the west of fifty-five. So our house is the one on this picture here to the left. I just had a few brief comments. I'd like the um, planning board to consider whether I don't know if a notice is required for an A and R plan to be circulated. I thought it was under um, I think it's section eighty-one T of, so forty-one A, eighty-one T said something about serving notice. And I don't think that from talking to some of my neighbors or ourselves, if anyone was appropriately noticed for the A and R plan hearing, I'd like the board to consider the, whether or not the applicant is deserving of this variance, or excuse me, this exception. Um, in this case, you know, they're talking about spinning one lot off of a a lot that contains three hundred and fifty-two thousand square feet, more or less. Um, three hundred and eighty-six square feet is point one percent of that lot. To me, it seems kind of silly that if they're the ones who designed a lot to spin off of this larger parcel, it, it's almost as if they're trying to go the planning board into some kind of litigation over this issue. And I think that's inappropriate. Um, taken as a whole, I believe the bylaws of Sherburne should be taken as a whole, that we shouldn't be allowed to take an A and R here and a a, a different plan goes to the Board of Health, a different plan goes to the Conservation Commission. Um, I, I mean, Bob has been forthwith. He has forwarded us plans, but from each, each one of these town boards, I think, has gotten a separate plan showing various building envelopes, various rights of way, multiple, you know, driveways shared by multiple lots. Uh, this plan has two houses on it. There's another plan that shows five houses on it. I, I think if you want to take the bylaw a, as a whole, the intelligent thing to do would be to prepare your plan as a whole and bring it in front of these different committees and boards to have an appropriately sequenced and uh, appropriate hearings for what is right now is going to just, it seems like the, they're, they're gonna, the development plan is to take as much liberty with the bylaw as possible in order to advance small aspects of this larger project that they are unwilling to share. And I don't think that that's really very transparent, and I don't think it's very constructive in this neighborhood. So um, I'd also just like to thank uh, Mr. Burns for his comments. I believe that those, I think everyone in the neighborhood echoes those comments. And I'm hopeful that the board will act accordingly and not grant this exception. Um, and maybe even consider going back to the A and R plan itself as something that wasn't appropriately noticed. And thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Brian. Gino, does anyone else have their hand up?
Yes, Courtney Eck is next.
Courtney, please.
Uh, Courtney at Conservation Commission. Just briefly, um, so you understand the conservation approval. This is very similar to what Daryl said about Board of Health. We, we have a very limited scope of what we look at, a small jurisdictional area, and other than staying out of the resource area, the wetland and the fifty-foot no alteration zone, a well on its own is considered um, a temporary disturbance. And so really, we don't analyze, you know, could this go anywhere else? If it's not going to cause an impact on the wetland, um, then the person can put it where they want.
Thank you. Gino, does anyone else have their hand up?
Neil McPherson was next.
Neil, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Neil McPherson, nine Great Rock Road. So what I hear tonight becomes that what is being proposed does not really meet the intent, number one. Number two, that this has not been granted before. And while I appreciate the board has the opportunity to make a decision, the question becomes, why in this situation? We have someone who's coming in to develop a lot at fifty-five or lots and likely has a plan at sixty-five. So what we're doing is developing and building additional houses. And I ask the question again, why now should we start and create this precedent of approving this exception when someone's coming in to build additional lots for the purposes of making profit? So those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you very much, Neil. Gino, does anyone else have their hand up?
Yes, Sarah Teal and Josh, the rest of his name is not on the screen, so I can't.
That's okay. We'll, we'll take Sarah first because girls before boys. Sarah, please.
Thank you, sir. Uh, thank you, everyone, for your time tonight. We live at sixty-four Farm Road, which is sort of across the street and up the road a wee bit. And I think um, we are intelligent people, but very naive about a lot of this language and a lot of the pre-existing history. What I would say is that we have been privy to some of the plans for across the street, and it's hard to look at what's being presented tonight and not think about it as a somewhat nefarious approach to a much bigger grand plan. And we asked the board that they please, please advocate for those of us who are not as savvy about these things.
Thank you, Sarah. Josh?
Uh, I completely agree, and I second what our neighbors have said and appreciate their input. This is, there's nothing above board about Mr. Murchison's plan here, and Mr. Murphy has advocated in a way that is uh, misleading at best.
All right, thank you very much. Gino, does anyone else have their hand up?
Yes, Megan McCollum Fennell.
Please, Megan.
Hi, um, so I'm also in a butter, uh, fifty-eight Farm Road across the street. And I just wanted, well, I'll say, I'll basically echo what Sarah and Josh and Rob Byrne and Brian Moore and others have said about this. Well, first about the fact that we feel like we we don't really know what's going on because we didn't receive, I think, all of the information in, in, in an amount of time to really digest it or understand it. Um, it isn't, for those of you who know this, this area, it is, it's an ecologically or environmentally sensitive or fragile space. And I think Rob mentioned there, there are rock walls, there is a meadow that floods, there's just a lot there that feels uncomfortable to make any sort of fast decisions about changing or altering. So I would, I would encourage you to take the planning board to take its time in considering this application. And uh, we certainly would like to know a lot more about it um, before we can evaluate it for ourselves. But at this point, I don't, I will speak on behalf of myself and, and my family that we would not support um, this exception.
All right, thank you very much. Gino, does anyone else have their hand up?
I do not see any other hands.
Okay, so I'm going to give Jim Murphy an opportunity to respond if he's been taking notes and has any, um, try to keep it to a few minutes, but please, Jim?
Thank you very much, Chris. Um, well, first of all, I'm not aware of any previous requests for exception. If there have been, I'm happy to review any of those and what they happened. I do think this is the first time it has come up. So I don't think it has never been granted, but it's never been denied, is at least as far as I can, I can tell. Um, secondly, uh, the question about the driveway, it's, it's at least the experience of being in this town is that when you try to move a driveway, you would have to go through an approval of at least the Conservation Commission to take up all the hospital. And that we would be affecting some of the other topography and stone walls in the area for twelve feet, if in fact that's what it would do. Uh, which really would have no beneficial effect for anybody. It wouldn't change the effect that the lot would have on the people across the street or the next-door neighbors. It just wouldn't. So you would say, go through an exercise of moving the driveway twelve feet, then move the well twelve feet, and we back to the same place that there would be a single-family house that new neighbors could move into on uh, in front of the existing fifty-five farm load. We, there wouldn't be any gain other than us having to go through an exercise of moving the driveway. If we could get such an approval from CONCOM and the other boards, uh, twelve feet. Um, our engineer did say at the Board of Health that this was the only place uh, there was about a three-foot area that he could put this. And I know that the conservation agent came out and said they only had a limited jurisdiction, but we had to go back to the Conservation Committee because there were two trees in the area where we wanted to put the well. We had to get permission to cut down those two trees. That's how serious the oversight is of every aspect of this, of this area. So um, it, I, I, I would just, I would just say that the, the exception uh, has never been denied, to my knowledge, that uh, the, that the, the moving the driveway is, is, with all due respect, it doesn't materially change what would happen here, which would be, there would be a well, a house, and a septic system on a single-family lot of fifty thousand square feet across from the farm road of people and across, and next door to the moors. And that wouldn't change at all, other than requiring us to go through a long exercise over those twelve feet and not knowing whether or not that would be allowed. Um, so I just don't think that's, that's really the story. Now, as to intent, if everybody goes back and looks at all of the minutes of all of the meetings that relate to changes in the zoning board, they, they basically all have this suggestion of using your creativity. And I would just essentially say, if you go and look at any subdivision that has a, a cul-de-sac in it, you will see lot lines on the frontage similar to these lot lines in which there are people who have just a, a smidgen of a frontage in, in the property before they have their frontage. That's done all the time. It's a routine thing that engineers do to comply with the frontage requirement. Because as you know, we have more than three hundred feet here. We have, I think we have five or six hundred feet to get two houses. So we have more than enough land area uh, to put those in. But we have done testing. We have done testing where the septic is going to go. And we have perked successfully in this area where the preliminary septic design is. So of course, that is going to influence where you're going to put everything else. Your house envelope, your well has to be away from it. And we're not affecting the other, other, other uh, properties. Um, as to the standard of review, I, I don't, I mean, it, it, I think if you did ask town council, town ounce council would, I think, agree with me that there, that there are, is a set standard for variance that, that is the harshest. Then there's a special permit, then there's that waiver, and then there's exception. And I think as the building inspector said, um, the reason why they gave you this exception is what does, what effect does it have on what you want to have accomplished, which is, is there adequate access from the street to the house? Because that's what's getting shrunk from the street to the house. And there is adequate access, particularly on this one, because the access comes from a different location altogether. So I, I would just say that that is part of it. I, I respect Mary Ann uh, immensely. I think she did a wonderful job with the open space subdivision. We have gone over the language. But the, the idea here is that we need in Sherburne some additional housing options, and this is an additional housing option that we have available to us. And, and it should, and it shouldn't stop because of three hundred and eighty-six square feet. And I think it would be, you know, with all due respect, quite arbitrary to say, move the driveway uh, and then you can do it, and it will have no difference to anybody else. There's no dramatic difference in those twelve feet for what will happen to anybody else's property. It just, the, there just isn't. And I, I think I know that the, the crowd is not with me, but um, I think uh, if you, if you evaluate what the purpose is, which is access, utilities and sanitation, there's no reason not to grant this exception. And I would say that we did comply, just on the small point on that we did comply with our notice requirements with respect to the A and R. There aren't any, the eighty-one T refers to subdivision, not A and Rs. Uh, and I would say that we, there wasn't any requirement to give notice under the zoning bylaw. But at the board's suggestion, we did do that anyway. Now, we did provide the copies of these plans. These, as, as much as Mr. Moore says differently, these two plans show the same design in the A and R and the well permit. It's, it's the same location of everything. It's the same design in both places. Um, and uh, as you get more information, you put more information into a plan with the R engineers, and these are the ones that have been submitted because these are the ones that have been verified by the engineer to be the location that can hand, that, that can per- permit the the well, uh, even with all of the Sherburne setbacks. And I, I don't know why a well only has, has to be twenty feet from a driveway. I don't know why it has to be twenty-five feet from a lot line. I don't know why it has to be uh, uh, seventy-five feet from another well. Wha- what is the significance? But we've met with all those things and that we, the distances. Uh, you know, for this other well here, that circle, it says one six, one sixty-three point oh five. That was moved twelve feet away. It would be one seventy-five, which is still, both of those numbers, one sixty-three and one seventy-five are more than the requirement. And it just seems to be.
We, we talk, we talk about intent, and I think, you know, again, I don't know why we're going back to talk about the A and R. Believe me, I've spent a ton of time looking at this, more time than I would care to. Um, based on the exact wording of our regulations, it met the requirements for frontage. And I think when I initially presented it, I, I used the word creative because I was trying not to use the word abusive of our regulations. And unfortunately, because of things like this, we're going to sit back and we're going to look at every single line in our regulations and put a ton of time and make it harder for people that legitimately want to do projects. So.
I guess I would just, I just love to say one thing about that. I, I was before the planning board, seven or eight years ago, going over the way in which the words lot width were defined. And I, and I showed, I showed the planning board the way in which, if they interpreted it the way that we have now interpreted it, would be subject to these creative approaches. And the planning board opted not to change that definition. They are the ones that produced all of those examples.
I'm sorry, Jim, I'm sorry. This is my meeting, and, and we're talking about a separate topic right now. Gino, who is their hand up?
Daryl Beardsley has her hand up.
Um, she's, has there anyone that hasn't had, hasn't spoken that has their hand up?
Yes, Arthur Fennell and Mary O'Hara Moore have not spoken previously. Their, their hands are up as well.
Arthur has, has not spoken.
I don't think so. I don't remember.
Okay, Arthur, please.
Uh, no, sir. So, so I was just out, uh, I work as an emergency responder, and I just was out on a call. Um, so I have missed most of the meeting up until this point, and I apologize if anything I say has already been said. Uh, but there are a number of things that I wanted to uh, at least get out, uh, and then you could tell me if there's something that's, that's redundant, and I'll move on. Um, first of all, I think it's important to look at the bigger picture, uh, the bigger picture of what's happening at fifty-five Farm Road and sixty-five Farm Road. I understand there's a discrete issue that's on the table and that it's subject to the decision of the board. But that can't be looked at in a vacuum, and I think it's important to look at the bigger picture of uh, developments of a number of different parcels uh, on both, or the possible creation of a number of different parcels and lots on both properties. And how that would substantially affect Farm Road, which is really a jewel of both Sherburne and the surrounding communities. Uh, it's a scenic road, it's a historic road. Uh, everybody appreciates its natural beauty. Uh, and frankly, that would be lost, or at least in jeopardy, under many of the plans that I've seen uh, in front of the Conservation Commission and also the Board of Health. Um, and I think this is part of that, and I think it's important to look at it in the bigger context. I understand that that's um, a little beyond the scope of what's being decided specifically. But I think it's, I think all the other information is relevant, and I hope the planning board takes that into consideration as they consider this particular issue. Um, I don't know, I, I, I think there was some interest in having a continuance. Uh, there wasn't much notice of this meeting, less than seven calendar days, less than five business days. Uh, and if that's, if that's possible, I would like to ask the board to continue this so that we can have some further discussion. There really wasn't much time to, to rearrange schedules and to get information, all the necessary information that a butter's neighbors and other. There really wasn't much time to to rearrange schedules and to get information, all the necessary information that a butter's neighbors and other interested parties have. And we're gonna present that to the board. Uh, that ship may have sailed, I don't know if that was discussed earlier. Um, what I, I I think that the couple of points that I'd really like to make um is that this is. The in in the, and the zoning regulations that says that this is an exception. And so I think this, uh, and I don't know if the, if the board has a particular standard they're going by. But the plain language of it suggests that that should be only granted in exceptional circumstances, uh, otherwise it would be fairly regular. And if you look at the, the lot width, uh, it's not fifty feet, it's a hundred and fifty feet. It's at a very minimum fifty feet, and going beyond that, granting an exception for that to go even smaller than that. Uh, I think should be reserved for truly exceptional cases. In this case, by any lights, does not meet, doesn't even come close to that sort of exception. I I understand it's what the, what the developer wants to do, uh, but that's not what the board is here to do. They're here to set. Uh, standards for Sherburne, and they're here to make sure that generally lot sizes uh fit and conform to what. Uh, what is appropriate for the neighborhood and what is appropriate for Sherburne, and I think this is, I think this is neither. And going below the very minimum of fifty feet, which could be granted in exceptional circumstances, I just think is, is totally unwarranted, the circumstance. And I think as a last point, um, this isn't the only case where this exception is gonna come up now. And if this creates a precedent, I think it just sets a, I think it sets a bad precedent for this particular area, and I think it sets a bad precedent for Sherburne. For, you know, in perpetuity, uh, and I hope the board considers that, that, you know, exceptions should be granted in exceptional circumstances, and this is not warranted. And it will set a precedent that I think would be very unfortunate uh for Sherburne generally going forward. I guess that's all I have to say for right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Arthur. Gino, has, and does anyone have their hand up who hasn't had an opportunity to speak?
Uh, I no longer see Mary O'Hara Moore, Daryl Beardsley's hand is still up.
Okay, Daryl, please.
All right, so I want to mention something, this is uh not something that has been discussed by the Board of Health yet. But I plan to have a discussion with the board on this topic. And as I mentioned earlier, we review the plans that come to us against the requirements that we have. But as I look at this, we're, and we have a lot of properties in town that were built at a time. Um, when water and and septic concerns were not um. Maybe at the state of of technology that we have now and understanding. And there were certainly far fewer homes in town that could affect the water resources in town. So uh, as I look at this, a- a- so this is a. You know, there's some contortions going on here to get this lot in, and as I look at Lot Two. So I am a bit off topic, but as I look at Lot Two, I s- view it as it's going to be very difficult. For someone to be able to replace their septic there in the future. We make, we we grant variances because it's a pre-existing lot, but it's being. Set up for that kind of difficulty in the future in a way that we wouldn't have anticipated. So the Board of Health needs to think about this. It's not how we've normally operated, and I guess I've often thought that. The planning board has that discretion to look at planning and long-term planning, and. The Board of Health has not done that. Um, because we have imbued it as, as part of what we do, we are highly, we're regulatory, that is our function. And we try to stick very closely to that. So I just wanted to express that concern about the lot. Again, we approved the well location only because it was on a plan that met our requirements, assuming that the lot became a valid lot. So, that's, that's it.
Thank you very much, Daryl. Gino, does anyone else have their hand up?
I do not see any other hands up.
Okay, um, I'd like to, if the board has any other comments, I'm gonna start with Addie May.
Just, I mean, it's a, it's a challenge because I think as a planning board. We certainly try to work with people to do good development and. But there's. Just not sure that I'm comfortable with, just given that there's, seems to be something else going on here. And I don't know exactly how this will impact a butter's.
That, that's fine. Thank you very much. Will, what are your thoughts?
Uh, I'm also quite uncomfortable with this, this concept. Um, I I do want to explore the possibility for their. Advice for the board from legal counsel.
Okay.
That's a, it's a, it's a general matter. I think it, when, when faced with an applicant, whenever it can't bend our. Time seen, it exercises their discretion to break another rule, um, but I I'm open to. To uh further advice from counsel.
All right, thank you. Um, Rob Wolf?
Uh, yeah, I guess I'll echo Will and I'll say whoever mentioned that. As this seems to be using some extremes of the. Details of interpretation to justify the A and R, we maybe want to stick to the details of. The ru- the other requirements, including the width, so I'm feeling somewhat negative on this.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna present a motion. Now, motions, in my view, should be positive motions. I don't think motions should be negative. So I'm gonna present a positive motion. The board can do nothing with it. The board can second it and continue a discussion. And then we vote. Now, if you vote positively for it, it means you're in favor of this granting this exception. Okay, a negative vote means that you're not in favor of the motion, so. I move to grant a request for an exemption to zoning bylaw four point two, which would allow lot width to be reduced to less than fifty. Feet. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion from the board? Okay, so now, a positive vote means that we're granting it, a negative vote means that we're not going to grant it.
Can I ask just a procedural question from Gino?
You may.
Um, just if. Is there any um limitations on this issue coming, re brought back to the board? If it, what's the board makes a decision, what are the, what is the process, Gino? If there was further information.
Um, you know what, you know, there's, there's a motion on the table. I I don't, I don't mean to bully you around, Addie May. You're a lot nicer than me. There's a motion on the table. Let's vote on the motion. Um, there is a process if they're unhappy with our decision. And that would be to go to the ZBA and appeal our decision. So, does anyone else have any questions about the motion on the table? So remember, a vote yes means you're in favor of granting the waiver.
Chris, I just want to mention that Frank is here now, so I don't know.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna have vote Frank vote because he wasn't here for the discussion, so, but thank you. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Chris, nay. Addie May?
Nay.
Will?
Nay.
Rob Wolf?
Nay.
It is defeated. Thank you very much, everybody. Gino, is there any other business tonight?
Uh. Not really, we did, we did the uh town planning report and we did uh use this other board, so I would say no.
Okay, um. We have a busy couple of weeks, so on Thursdays, I'm gonna be meeting with Gino, and and again. Um, if anyone wants to join, that's fine. If there's, if you plan on joining, please let them know. Because I don't want to quorum when we start talking about Coolidge Street, okay? Do I have a motion to adjourn? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion before we vote? Chris, I'm in favor of adjourning. Will?
Also.
Addie May?
Aye.
Rob Wolf?
Aye.
Um, and why not Elizabeth? Elizabeth?
Yes, please.
And Frank, Frank, Frank can vote on this.
Well, he just showed up, but that's okay. He he let me know ahead of time, so I'm not picking on Frank. Um, everybody, thank you for your time and consideration. Um, Jim, I hope we're still friends. Everyone, have a great night.